Good evening, we'll call together a meeting of the Mayor Board of Trustees of the Village of Woodridge and request Clerk Neestrom to please call the roll.
Trustee Kagan.
Present.
Trustee Abbott.
Present.
Trustee Banks.
Present.
Trustee Beavers.
Present.
Trustee Cunningham.
Present.
Mayor Murphy.
Present.
Form is established.
Please stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Trustee Banks.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, the sovereign of this land, one nation, under God, indivisible, with due justice and
Under special awards and presentation, delighted this evening to convey to you a proclamation that has been issued by the Village of Woodridge that I will read in part. Whereas Seven Bridges Golf Course provides previously operated as a 36-hole golf course known as the Woodridge Golf Course. And whereas Seven Bridges Golf Course is part of the 1987 annexation by Forest City Harris and was redeveloped as the Seven Bridges Golf Course by Forest City Harris Group. And whereas through the foresight of the elected officials who were committed to establishing an 18-hole championship course, the Seven Bridges Golf Course was established in 1991 and is part of a larger 400-acre Seven Bridges Development. And whereas the Seven Bridges Golf Course was the site of the 1993 and 1994 Michael Jordan Celebrity Golf Championship. And whereas Seven Bridges Golf Course is listed as number 10 on the Golf Links List of the Best Illinois Golf Courses. And whereas today Seven Bridges Golf Course serves us as a favorite community gathering venue and is used by 21,000 golfers annually, hosts banquets and events and serves high-quality meals at the Seven Bridges Grill in the Dock. And whereas on Tuesday, September 20th, 2011, Seven Bridges Golf Course hosted an anniversary invitational celebrating 20 years of operation. Now therefore, I, William F. Murphy, Mayor of the Village of Woodridge, DuPage Will and Cook Counties, Illinois, by the virtue of my office to hereby proclaim October 7th, 2011, as Seven Bridges Golf Course Day in the Village of Woodridge and urge all citizens of Woodridge to recognize and celebrate this longstanding amenity to our community. We then adjourn to questions from the public. We have a formal public hearing this evening, the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, And I'll call this portion of the meeting to order and ask the Village Clerk to take the role of the board.
Trustee Abbott.
Present.
Trustee Banks.
Present.
Trustee Beavers.
Present.
Trustee Cunningham.
Present.
Trustee Kagan.
Present.
And Mayor Murphy.
Present.
This is a public hearing of the Mayor and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Woodridge convened for the following purpose: to consider village application for Community Development Block Grants, CDBG, funding for James Avenue Neighborhood Strategy, area street resurfacing, and Woodridge Community Resource Center programming. Notice of the public hearing on the matter to be considered was published in the Woodridge Bugle on September 7th, 2011. A copy of this notice shall be made a part of the hearing record as Village Exhibit A. Let the record further show that all other notices required by statute or ordinance to be given have been given. At this time, I would ask the Village Board to consider rules of procedure for this evening's public hearing. Copy of such rules has previously provided to each of you. For those of you in the audience, copies of the rules are available at the table to the right of the device. I therefore entertain a motion to adopt the rules for this public hearing. Motion by Trustee Banks, second by, excuse me, motion by Trustee Beaver, second by Trustee Banks. Further questions and discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Neestrom, please call the roll.
Trustee Banks.
Aye.
Trustee Beavers.
Aye.
Trustee Cunningham.
Aye.
Trustee Kagan.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
Would the village staff please proceed to present their case?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll read to you this evening the information that is actually found under omnibus vote under the resolution. The village applies annually for Community Development Block Grant Funds to assist in financing of projects for the benefit of the community. This year, the village proposes to resurface six aging and substantially correct streets within the James Avenue Neighborhood Strategy area, which is generally located south of 75th Street, east of Woodridge Drive, and west of I-355. The total estimated cost of the improvements is $405,000, with the village seeking $303,375 in CDBG grant funding.
Thank you. We will now hear statements or testimony from persons who wish to support the village staff recommendation. Observing no one at this time, we will permit cross-examination of the village staff who testified in support. Does anyone wish to cross-examine the village staff or anyone who testified in support of the staff? This includes questions. Observing no one, then, we will now hear statements, testimony, or evidence from persons opposing the request of the village staff. Observing no one, does the village staff desire to make any summation?
No, thank you.
At this time, then, I would ask the Village Board for a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Trustee Abbott, second by Trustee Cunningham Pitzek. Final questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Clerk Neestrom, please call the roll.
Trustee Kagan.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Banks.
Aye.
Trustee Beavers.
Aye.
Trustee Cunningham.
Aye.
The second phase of the public hearing is a discussion on the Woodridge Community Resource Center programming, and at this time, I would call on staff to make a presentation.
Thank you. The village has received past funding from the DuPage Community Development Commission for the operation of the Woodridge Community Resource Center, otherwise known as the CRC. In fiscal year 2011, the DuPage Community Development Commission changed the way grants funds are dispersed to agencies in the Neighborhood Resource Center cluster. The change involved moving the full application process from a yearly requirement to once every three years, with the same amount dispersed to the agencies all three years of funding cycle. The FY 2012 application will update the DuPage County Community Development Commission in the changes to the CRC operations over the past year, but will not affect the grant award that the CRC receives. The village will receive in the amount of $10,375 for center operations.
I thank you Administrator Rush. We will now hear statements or testimony from persons who wish to support the staff At this time, we would also permit cross-examination of the village staff. And also statements or testimony or evidence from persons opposing the request of the village staff. Does the village staff desire to make a brief summation?
No, thank you.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Motion by Trustee Abbott, second by Trustee Beavers. Final questions or discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Neestrom, please call the roll.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Banks.
Aye.
Trustee Beavers.
Aye.
Trustee Cunningham.
Aye.
Trustee Kagan.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
We then proceed to two opportunities for residents and guests to address the board. The first was an opportunity for questions that are not related to the agenda, which will be followed with an opportunity to ask questions or make comments regarding agenda items. So if there's any resident or guest that would like to raise questions or comments not related to the agenda, we would ask that you proceed to the podium and state your name and address for purposes of the record. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Louis Warden, 3325 Stillwall Court in Woodridge. I would like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the members of the board, the chief police, and all the village employees that put that wonderful program together in remembrance of 9/11. It was really nice, and thank you all very much.
Thank you for those kind comments, Lou. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board regarding matters not on the agenda? If not, then we'll proceed with an opportunity for residents and guests to ask questions or make comments regarding the agenda. Observing no one, we thank you for being with us tonight, and then we proceed to the omnibus vote. After a motion has been made, and second to approve the omnibus vote, we will have an opportunity for Ms. Rush to give us an overview of those matters, and at this time, I would inquire as to whether there's a request for separate consideration of any of those matters. Hearing none, the chair entertains a motion to approve omnibus vote items A through D and acceptance of E and F.
motion.
Motion by Trustee Cunningham Pitzek, second by Trustee Kagan. Okay, we will then proceed with an overview of those omnibus votes matters from Administrator Rush.
Thank you. First item for your consideration this evening is Resolution Number R-652011. This relates to the first item on the public hearing related to the James Avenue Neighborhood Strategy Area Street Resurfacing Improvements. This includes portions of Cattelfa Avenue, Deerfield Avenue, Frontage Road, John Crow Lane, Sprucewood Avenue, and Walnut Avenue. Second item for your consideration is Resolution Number R-662011, and this also pertains to the matter that we just previously discussed in the public hearing related to funding for the Woodridge Community Resource Center through the Community Development Block Grant Funds. Item C is a motion to have a liquor license fee waiver for St. Scholastica Family Bingo Night fundraiser on October 9th, a bongo night fundraiser on October 14th, January 20th, and April 27th. Item D is ordinance number 201146, authorizing the sale by public auction of personal property owned by the Village of Woodridge. Periodically, we dispose of property. The village is required to pass a surplus property ordinance. This ordinance declares these vehicles and provides for their disposal via DuPage Mayor's and Managers Conference Semiannual Auction. Item E is minutes, and item F is the accounts payable registers.
Thank you Administrator Rush. We have a motion on the floor to approve omnibus vote items A through D and acceptance of E and F. Is there final questions or discussion on those matters? Hearing none, Clerk Neestrom, please call the roll.
Trustee Banks.
Aye.
Trustee Beavers.
Aye.
Trustee Cunningham.
Aye.
Trustee Kagan.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
Under communication this evening, we have a financial report. Ms. Rush.
Thank you. Previously distributed and also included in your packet this evening is a herb document put together by the Finance Department that summarizes our standing, financial standing as of the fourth quarter of 2010-2011. Deb Frechlag has a brief presentation to provide some highlights and provide an opportunity for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Katie. Mayor, Board. Just wanted to let you know, there's a few slides up here that I'd like you to follow along with. Right now, I wanted to let you know that we are on target, and actually, we're above target. And we're doing well after the preliminary results of fiscal year 2011. And part of that is, the general fund is our biggest portion, which is our operating fund, and I wanted to let you know where the revenues, the expenditures, and the balance came in at. Also, a couple of highlights from the other funds. Check in at where the economy stands and some of the outside pressures we're still This will give you the knowledge that right now, we stand at about a $1.5 million surplus. This will allow you to let our residents know that we can still give them the core services they deserve. This will also help you in preparing for the next budget season that's unfortunately coming right back up. Originally, in our budget, we had expected to be at about a 63% fund balance. Then at year-end estimate, we had expected it to be about a 77% fund balance. Right now, as it stands, we're actually at 85% fund balance. So we're doing well. As far as the revenues and expenditures, right now, the revenues are higher by about $1 million. However, as it's stated in the report, we do have some investigation we're doing on some sales tax, so we're expecting that to be at about $500,000. Also, expenditures are lower by $1 million. Our major revenue sources, the sales tax, our largest source, has higher than projected, and we were very conservative on our sales tax when we projected that because of the economy and not knowing where that was over a year and a half ago. Also, the income taxes, we came in much better, as you can see, and that is because we did use the IML estimate that we usually use and the Illinois municipality, but we did take 15% off of that when we did our budget, just because we didn't know what the state would be doing. All departments came in lower than budgeted, and that was altogether about $1 million, and the largest areas were under personnel and in professional services. As far as highlights on other funds, the water fund, we actually purchased 22 million gallons less than last year. However, revenues and expenditures were both higher, and that was due to the increase that DWC and the City of Chicago had implemented, which Woodridge followed along with in passing that along. The motor fuel tax fund, revenues were higher. We had received $150,000 one-time source from the state capital program, and we also had gotten a grant for the 71st Street construction, which is about $200,000. The capital fund, we had about $8.5 million that we expended, and a lot of that was the land that we purchased for the senior housing project on James Avenue, Pine Ridge. Then also, we paid the developer 1.8 in the redevelopment of that area also. On the revenue side, we had issued bonds, so we had bond proceeds of about $6.3 million. So our expenditures were just slightly higher than our revenues. On the economy front, as I think the ticker showed today, I mean, the economy is still very unsure. The housing market, we're still having foreclosures, and our unemployment rate is still in the area of 9%. Interest rates are nonexistent. So we still have a lot of outside pressures. We still have a structural deficit shown in the outer years. We will be reevaluating that based on these figures that we have just brought in front of you to see where that puts us. Also, we still don't know what the state's doing. I mean, we have the veto session coming up, kind of analyze that as the Green Bay Packers going against the Bears. I don't, I'll let you decide which is the state and which is the village on what pitch. But we still have a lot of unknown with that. And what, that's on Sunday? No.
It's on Sunday.
Just wanted to, in brief, tell you a brief synopsis of where we were at and that we are on target and above, that that would allow you to have the fourth quarter and the fiscal year 2011 results, and a little bit on each of the forms. That gives you the knowledge that right now, we're about at $1.5 million in surplus, to let our residents know that we still have core services that we value very much, and that'll prepare you for the next budget season. And October 6th is our next presentat, not my presentation, but our next event, which is town meeting. And then November 3rd is our goal setting. And I'll open it up if there are any questions.
Thank you for that presentation. Questions and comments, may members of the board? We certainly appreciate the overview and are delighted with where things are going. Other comments or questions from board members? Thank you for that report. Turning to my report, two brief matters. One, I apologize for not having an opportunity to welcome and greet our scout that is in the audience. Perhaps you could stand and tell us your name and what troop you're with, and are you here working on a bench?
I'm Andy Corfman. I'm in the Troop 57 out of Downers Grove. I'm here working on citizenship in the community, American.
Outstanding. Well, congratulations on being in the scouting program. That's a program that benefits you now, but as you become an adult, it continues to benefit you each and every day, and we appreciate your coming to learn a little bit more about citizenship in the community. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We are also delighted this evening to welcome Jack Feldman. Jack, if you could please stand. Jack is a senior at Hinsdale Central High School. He is taking an advanced placement class on government, and they are currently doing a project on politics in action where they have an opportunity to become more involved, and in his case, he is focusing on policymaking. So he is with us tonight. He will be attending a staff administrative meeting next week, and depending on scheduling, perhaps a plan commission meeting in the near future, and maybe another board meeting. As I said, he's a senior, he's on the cross-country team, he's captain of the cross-country team. And tell us who won the meet tonight?
I got first place.
And you beat two?
Downers Grove North.
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome, appreciate you being with us. Ms. Rush, Administrator's report?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
We have no active agenda items. Is there any unfinished or new business to come to the board? Hearing none, the chair entertains a motion to adjourn to a workshop session, which will be immediately followed by an executive session on personnel. So the chair entertains a motion by Trustee Beaver, second by Trustee Abbott, to adjourn to a workshop session followed by an executive session. Hearing none, all in favor indicate by the sign "aye". Opposed, motion is approved. We are adjourned, and we are immediately convening a workshop session. Let the record reflect the presence of the individuals that were at the board meeting, and under the active agenda, we have only one matter, paperless agenda. I would call on Administrator Rush.
Thank you. This evening, we have a discussion for you in terms of our status on the paperless agenda process. We had talked about this briefly at our budget meeting, and we had reviewed various expectations we had at that time. Since then, we've had an opportunity to further explore the various programs and devices that would be required, and I'll turn it over to Peggy Callett to provide a synopsis of that, those findings.
Thank you. I'm a little embarrassed, though, because this is the paperless agenda meeting, and I've got a stack of papers. So hopefully, this is the last time that we'll do this. This, as Administrator Rush mentioned, this is a two-fold meeting to talk about, just to give you an update of what we've been doing, as well as to get some direction from you on how you'd like to proceed. And if things go well, next time, you'll just pull this up on your iPad. So you have a packet that kind of talks through how we have proceeded in the last several months in the last part of the budget workshop. We have come to a conclusion on a vendor who can provide the application that we're looking for. There are a few who really met our terms for both the process and for the cost. The application is what's called a software as a service, which means that we don't have that application here, it's not on our server, it's not owned by us, it's essentially in the cloud, it's an ASP that's hosted by the vendor. We pay on a month-to-month basis. There's no long-term contract. If you're dissatisfied with the service, you just stop using it. From a staff perspective, we see immediate results for our streamlining of our processes. It will quicken what we do, it will reduce the amount of work that we have to accomplish to get an agenda out. And I think really what we have discovered as we've gone through this is that it's really not just about an agenda, because what we're actually trying to purchase is a database that can archive all of our documents. So agendas are certainly a start for it, but it's also the Administrator's memorandum, and it's really everything that is right now on our document management system that already exists, and that would migrate over to this new system. One of the really neat things that we like about it the most, which I think is probably one of the reasons why it ranks so high on the list at the budget process, is that this really accomplishes our goals in terms of trying to be accessible to the community for government transparency and accountability. Right now, we try to be as open as we can, we try to put documents out onto our website, but all we're doing is putting PDFs onto a website. It's not indexed, it's not searchable, so you have to, and Mr. Warden maybe will speak in support of that, that you sort of have to know what you're looking for and where it is. This approach takes some of that guesswork out of the process, so you have the ability to search for documents. The ordinances, the resolutions, all will be available and easily found. So from a resident perspective, it really does accomplish that mission. We have a second part of that mission, is this very meeting, which we are broadcasting now, it happened since May. And when we started doing that, we explained it's, we're just going to get going with it. We're going to start videotaping it, and we'll see how that goes. Incorporated into this process is a way to professionalize that to a greater extent, so that we are, we have more than a camera that's just sitting on the ground, we will have hard-wired cameras in the room that will be broadcasting the meetings. Those will run to a video stream that will move them and upload them to the vendor, who will then stream them onto our website. We no longer have to host that on our server, that's on the vendor server, takes a lot of room, expands a lot of the capacity for us. What it also does, then, is integrate it into the electronic agenda. So, and if you look at, in part of your packet, I think I've had it all, but I don't have any left to tell you what page it's on, but near the back of the packet, you'll see a picture of a website that shows a video component and the agenda. So if someone is on our website, and if they wanted to look at item 3B under the omnibus agenda, and they wanted to see the corresponding video, they would just click onto that agenda item, and it would bring you back to that portion of the video. So it really makes it much more user-friendly for our residents, and brings us, I think, a little bit closer into what current technology provides and what other communities are providing to their residents. One of the nice things for us is, this is not new technology, we're not on the bleeding edge. This is out there, it has been refined, and actually, we're coming in at a time when both pieces are put together into one system. So the paperless agenda system and the video system now are one system. Communities before were purchasing those separately. So I think we're coming into it at a really nice time for a nice system that will provide our residents the type of accessibility that they need. What I'd like to do, then, is get a sense from you as to how you would like to approach this. What we would like to do is first know, are you okay with having an electronic copy of the agenda? As I said, this is going to be a web-based system, so it's in the cloud, you would, you'd have a password to be able to access the agenda. You'd be able to put your notes onto your agenda. You'd have it at your house, you'd have it here. So I'd like to get a sense for, are you comfortable, are you willing to let go of the paper and move over to an electronic device? Because that's really kind of the threshold question. I'm getting a lot of nods, so I think we're in good shape. So the next part is that we have looked at different methodologies for you to access that document. And it really, as long as you have some type of, you know, a computer, a laptop, a tablet, what have you, you'll be able to access it as long as you have an internet connection. From our perspective, the most cost-effective way to approach this is with a tablet. We looked at providing laptops versus providing tablets, and there's just, there's no question which is less expensive. The tablets run, you know, well under $700, while the laptops are well over $1,000. So from our perspective, the tablet works best. There are really only a couple of tablets to choose from that could provide the service that we need, and so when we looked at those, they're pretty comparable in price, and we found that the iPad has applications specifically for public body paperless agenda systems. So they've already got it out there. It makes it that much easier for you to use it. So providing those kind of comparisons, what we're recommending is that we purchase iPads, they would be for the elected officials, the village administrator, and then we would have one for staff so that we have the ability to work through any issues that you might have as you're becoming more familiar with the process. And if there are no objections, then what we'll do here from this point forward is we will engage IQM2 for the paperless agenda process for that application. We will test-run it internally. Our intent is to go live at the January meeting. You'll see some, well, you won't see some work, but you'll see the evidence after the fact of some work in here where we will provide wireless connection so that when you're here, you'll be able to access the documents. One thing I should mention, I think it's noted in the agenda item, is that we would not be purchasing, we would not be subscribing to a wireless network. So there wouldn't be 3G or 4G access on this paid for by the village. So if you've got that internet connection at home, that would support it, it would be supported here, it's supported at other hotspots. If there is a need for that, we just need to talk about it. I think that covers about everything. Are there any questions that you might have about how this process works, how it would affect you?
Mayor Murphy? Trustee Beavers.
Peggy, can you talk a little bit about the cost savings? I see you have a slide on that. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. Right now, I think we have estimated as part of the budget process, we estimated that the internal process we use right now costs about $20,000 a year to produce agendas. The cost of the iPads is about, is less than $6,500. And the cost of the software is actually a little bit less than what I had in there because if we pay by credit card, we get a discount. So it's just under $15,000 a year. That's an ongoing cost. So our cost savings on, the iPads will run a three-year life, generally speaking. So I think we're looking at probably about a $10,000 savings over the course of the three years. If you're just looking at out-of-pocket costs, from our perspective, it's not about cost savings necessarily. And let me just note that it is also under budget. The budget was $60,000. This is closer to, I think, about $28,000 or so. The real savings here is in terms of time. Time for us to respond to FOIAs, time for our residents to be able to find documents on the website, the ability for them to watch the meetings in a way that's meaningful and to pull information. We've tried to jerry-rig it a little bit so that we're explaining to them what the items are. This process makes it just that much easier for them to access information. So there is a cost savings, but I think that the real savings is in terms of the processing and staff time and resident time.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Thank you for that report, and obviously the sense of the board is let's move forward.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Okay, that concludes the workshop session. We will be immediately convening in five minutes an executive session, so the chair entertains a motion to adjourn the workshop session by trustee Abbott, second by trustee Beavers. All in favor indicate by the sign aye. Opposed, motion is approved. We are adjourned and will reconvene in executive session in five minutes.